Tonight is no decisions are going to be made strictly a work session. So I want everybody to understand that. I'll give everybody that's asked enough time to speak, probably no more than three minutes. But again, please hold your comments to questions so that we can get answers. So we can make a good sound decision on tonight's proposal. So with that said, go ahead and ask for roll poll.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson. Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez. Counselor Sanchez.
As she called in. Okay. I see on the screen. So let's go ahead and show the record. She is present.
Counselor Richards.
Here.
Let the record show I have seven present and no absent and regards to Sweet Home Sleeping Shelter proposals this evening. That said, I'll turn it over to Ray to get this thing started.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so as council has asked for a work session tonight, just the staff, we've just tried to put together some information for you as best we could to kind of steer you through the process, particularly what instigated the whole process. Counselor Gorley is chair of the Community Health Committee has been working with diligently with a devoted group of community members to try and tackle this as well. So I would anticipate Counselor Gorley will have some information as well to help fill in on, on, on the process that's happened so far. In front of you, we've put together a few things for your perusal at your convenience. First is the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals known as, and we've referred to it often as Martin v. Boise. Second document you have is, it's just something I found online that I thought might be useful for you. It's the Harvard Law Review where they're discussing Martin v. Boise. You also have enrolled House Bill two zero zero six recently passed by the legislature. You also have enrolled House Bill three one one five passed by our Oregon Legislature. And then we've also included, it's called Blake, referred to as Blake, et cetera, versus the City of Grants Pass. To give you an idea, timeline wise, actually Grants Pass came after Martin v. Boise. That should have probably been the third thing in your packet, just to keep it in chronological order for you. So I think what I'd like to do maybe is if Robert wants to kind of just briefly go through, if he's okay doing that on, we can do that together. He's given me a stare like maybe he doesn't really want to. So I'll, maybe I'll kick it off and Robert can fill in the blanks. And I'm going to give you the very, very Cliff's Notes versions here. Martin v. Boise Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals essentially said that you could not criminalize homelessness. You cannot, everybody as a human being has the right to rest their head someplace. And went on to say that as a community, you can't trespass or cite somebody for doing so unless you can provide them with another place to go. Initially, when it came out and when you read this, it will say bed. It uses the word bed. You have to provide them a bed. And so we're all scratching our head on how to deal with that. Then came some more clarification in Blake versus City of Grants Pass, which clarified because Grants Pass had some anti camping or camping restrictions that they were utilizing. That clarified a little bit more related to Martin v. Boise. But quite honestly, House Bill three one one five really spells it out for us. I think Robert can fill in the blanks there. And explains what we as a city are allowed to do in dealing with the homeless population. So that's it in a nutshell. Robert, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
Just, just basically they, as we all know, the Boise case came down in two thousand eighteen nineteen, I believe, and set, set everything up. Basically, just to reiterate it, it's, it's holding was, we hold only that so long as there is a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction than the number of available beds in parentheses in shelters. The jurisdiction cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntary sitting, lying, or sleeping in public. That is as long as there is no option of sleeping indoors. The government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter. That's their holding from the, from the case and, and as you know, it comes from the interpretation of the Eighth Amendment on cruel and unusual punishment. And then in two thousand and twenty, the, it's a, it's a federal case out of the Oregon District Court down in Grants Pass. It goes on to say, the following in this case does not say that Grants Pass must allow homeless camps to be set up at all times in public parks. Just like in Martin, that's the Boise case. This holding in no way dictates to a local government that it must provide sufficient shelter for the homeless or allow anyone who wishes to sit, lie, or sleep on the street at any time and at any place. And then it cites Martin for that deal. And that's out of the Ninth Circuit, and that's our federal circuit. Nor does this holding cover individuals who do have access to adequate temporary shelter, whether they have the means to pay for it or because it is realistically available to them for free, but who choose not to use it. The city may implement time and place restrictions for when homeless individuals may use their belongings to keep them warm and dry and when they must have their belongings packed up. The city may also implement an anti camping ordinance that is more specific than the one in place now, referring to, of course, Grants Pass. For example, the city may ban the use of tents in public parks without going so far as to ban people from using any bedding type materials to keep warm and dry while they sleep. The city may also consider limiting the amount of bedding type materials allowed per individuals in public places. Moreover, this holding does not limit Grants Pass ability to enforce laws that actually further public health and safety, such as laws restricting littering, public urination and defecation, obstruction of roadways, possession and distribution of illegal substances, harassment, or violence. Grants Pass may retain a large toolbox for regulating public space without violating the Eighth Amendment. That was basically the conclusion in the holding of those two cases. And then I, I believe that maybe Blair knows more since this is dealing with housing, has some insight on the House Bill two zero zero six. But what it means to me is, is they set basically up in the legislature for use of better, an exception to what they'd had before, or at least explained a little bit better, for setting up a local government shall approve an application for the development of use of land for an emergency shelter. And they basically define what that is, what it needs to be, and who can run it. And so it says in here, any political subdivision may allow any public or private entity to allow overnight camping by homeless individuals using in vehicles. So it's addressed a part there. And it says it's not a land use decision. So it, you know, bypasses a lot of that. And it basically sets up what an emergency shelter, if, if you're going to have one, to comply with the state law. That's what I.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
Could I have each of the counselors look at your Grants Pass packet? I just noticed I printed, so there were a couple of different briefs and I printed out some of the wrong ones and some of the right ones. So the top of your Grants Pass case should have blue on it. And it should say case one colon one eight dash C V. Does it have that on there? It would look like this. Okay, good. You guys got the right ones then. I did not get the right one.
Did you have anything on two, two zero? Okay. It looked like an exception to me, or at least a.
Yeah. Blair, Blair may have a follow up on House Bill two zero zero six.
Essentially, in previous meetings, I mentioned that there would be a conditional use for a shelter. House Bill two thousand and six basically tosses that out. And we don't, it essentially says that any emergency shelter doesn't go through the land use process. Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to go through that, doesn't, is not reviewed by the Land Use Board of Appeals or anything like that. And it completely removes any public hearing requirement or public notice requirements. So anything that essentially puts us in the position that anyone, any qualified organization that obtains property and wants to operate an emergency shelter, if they comply with the provisions in House Bill two thousand and six, then we have to allow it. Regardless of whether we even like them, if they, if they, if they follow those provisions outlined in that bill, it shall be approved. So it doesn't say exactly how that process is to be handled. Some cities have put together an application for people to, to fill out. Another city, I think, I believe Eugene just says, provide a narrative that says how you're going to meet these things. And then we'll look at it and it's approved basically administratively, rather than going to the planning commission or even using planning staff or anything like that. So it, it basically is, it would be a very quick process that could be done. That law is set to sunset July first, two thousand and twenty-two, so next July. However, we clearly don't have the ability to, if we have an application come before us, we don't have the ability to put it off until then. But whatever does get approved prior to then would be able to remain in operation as long as they follow the criteria in that bill, which are essentially health and safety regulations. In a nutshell. If you have questions, I can speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, would you define, if I may, there would you define a sunset thing for me?
Sunset. So it specifically says that the provision that says that we have to approve an application, that section of that bill is automatically repealed on July first, two thousand and twenty-two. But anything that is in operation prior to that can continue operating.
So you have ample reading to do at your discretion here in the near future. But we wanted to kind of provide, yeah, you're very welcome. So we wanted to provide that for you and help you understand what the things that have been shaping and forming, how both staff and Health Committee has been moving forward.
The citizens in this audience have a copy of this?
All of those are available on the table. Absolutely.
I want to make sure that they have a copy.
So. So what we wanted to show you now is what we're dealing with currently. These pictures were taken yesterday, is that, I believe. This is over behind the fire station. So what we've had going on for the past couple of months is trying to be as compliant as we could be. We have been steering essentially all of our homeless population to the parking lot across from Old City Hall and the library. On Tuesdays, we've, we have the farmer's market who we've granted license earth to that property on, on Tuesdays. So Jeff and his staff and the public work staff get there in the morning. They asked them to move over behind City Hall and then they spend some time cleaning up the mess, which you'll see a little later. What we've essentially done is we then asked them last week, we've said, okay, now go ahead and move back across the parking lot. There was some resistance to that. And quite frankly, after some discussion in-house and discussion with the Fire Department with Chief Behringer, just decided we'll leave, let them stay behind the old City Hall building until we can figure something else out essentially. These are just some pictures of the things that we're dealing with now, staff is dealing with due to the homelessness. Someone's got to clean that up and that ends up being us. Go ahead and keep going. What's really interesting about some of what you're seeing there is it developed in less than 24 hours. Anything that you see picture wise there, dealing behind the old City Hall, especially like that picture in the lower right hand corner, that was all done in 24 hours. Go ahead and keep going, LaGia. So our public work staff is, is having to, to deal with this and clean this up. It's man hours, it's time, and it's not pleasant. I'm going to let Greg come up and kind of explain to you the things that were, that they're doing and dealing with. And you can, he's got some costs and figures for you wherever you want to go.
Yeah. So over the last couple of months, we've spent roughly under about thirty-three hundred dollars just on cleanup. But the type of cleanup, so, but recently the average, we're averaging about four hundred and fifty dollars a week. That sweeper cleanup of, of the parking lot, the streets around. That's also being used for pressure washing, concrete sidewalks. To be honest, the concrete in that area, you know, it's porous, bacteria and feces and urine soaks into concrete. So there's some, probably some current damage, you know, which I'm sure we can probably get some chemicals and do some cleaning. There's needles. So staff is having to be cautious of drug use and the things that are going on there. So that's pretty much some of the things that we're experiencing and it's daily. If, if we didn't clean up daily, it would be worse than these pictures.
There's a couple of pictures here that I did not include because I they're fairly inappropriate for a public setting that we do have. It's, it's a bit of a nightmare. Absolutely. So.
Also, also for the record, we've also had two fire calls right out in Pleasant Valley that almost got out of control, which got pretty dangerous there for a little bit.
Yeah. So that, that's Public Works. As you said, we've, we're spending a couple thousand dollars here just in the last couple of weeks. Jeff has some additional information on.
Go ahead and say. Yeah, just one last thing I want to, and let Jeff. I think one of the things that we're having, like I said, we're having to go back daily, but being able to put them in a smaller area has compressed how we clean up. So it has helped. I don't know what the answers are. That's why you guys are here, but, but knowing that it's in one area has at least helped. So.
I'm going to remove my mask a little bit just for now and so I can speak a little more clearly. First of all, is there an issue more divisive than how to respond to homelessness? I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe mask mandates or mandated vaccines, but other than that, this is probably the most divisive issue that you may encounter for quite some time. And there's a lot that's, that's gone into some of the, the decisions, the, some of the decisions of those photos that have, have been up on the screen. And as Counselor Gorley knows, it's been a long process just to try to, to figure out how to respond and best deal with the situation that we're faced with. We've dealt, our department's dealt with homelessness. We have some, some stats over the last five years that we could, we could provide. They're relatively consistent. We see a, an uptick this year in, in some of the stats that we have. But in our current year, you'll see some of them, them posted up there. You know, with our population of over ninety-eight hundred people, really about less than point, less than one half of a percent of the population is homeless based on the point in time count. And so with that, we're talking about a less than a half a percent of people and they account for over nine percent of our call load. That's fairly significant. And so, and that has been somewhat consistent over the last five years. And about two, two and a half years ago, we really started tasking ourselves with how can we, how can we make some improvements? How can we, you know, I always like to say, you know, you, you, you find a problem and you're trying to find a solution for that problem. And so we began reaching out to different agencies, different organizations on what, what is available for resources. Cause the whole intent when we started was to be able to provide a hand up, not, not a handout. I know it's not kind of cliche, but that's, that's the truth. We wanted to find resources that could come in and give these individuals an opportunity to, to help themselves out, help themselves up out of the, the, the situation they're in. And so that was really what, what we'd talked about. City Manager Towery and I sat down and I started reaching out to just whatever entities were around that, that did work with the homeless. And, and it's been a long process. The wheels of government don't turn fast, but what has really came into play as we started this was the, the landscape changed. Boise changed the landscape on how police can respond to dealing with the homelessness. Grants Pass has changed the landscape. All that was basically codified in House Bill two zero zero six. That's changed how we have to respond. And as Blair and Robert mentioned, is it three one one five? House Bill three one, no, it's Senate Bill two zero zero six. I got it mixed up. I think that's changed the landscape on how a city has to consider responding to homelessness. And so with, with these in mind, we, we've just put a lot of work into what are some solutions? And some of it, I want to kind of go back to some of those photos. Decision, we consciously made decisions that we have to offer a place to individuals to lay their heads at night because of the, the court rulings. And so, and that was not an easy, easy decision. And so at one point, the, the main concern, we wanted to protect our parks from the, the nuisances that can come with, with homelessness. And so we initially had, as the city manager said, made a decision. We changed that decision and which is now located near, near the Fire Department. There's some of those photos you've seen, you know, Community Service Officer Sean Morgan and I, we spent probably three, four hours over there yesterday, probably three hours over there yesterday combined, dealing with, with those issues that are going on over there. One individual was arrested for the offensive littering, for really not complying with cleaning up their area. Is that an answer, you know, or no, you know, is there, there's very little, you know, and, and that individual's already in our community court process, just entered that. And so is there some hope there? We'd like to think so. But it's, we just haven't set back and let this occur. We've put thought into it and, and they're absolutely right. This, this popped up within, you know, within two days. It was, it was an absolute train wreck back there. And so we've been responding to, to try to, to, to rectify that. All that kind of tails into, we've got to find, find it an option. Cause I don't think what we're doing now is a legitimate option. I think we need to have a more controlled setting. A lot of our concern stems back from the, the shelter scenario we had at the Nazarene Church. And none of us are going to sit here and say that was a, a success because it wasn't. There were a number of reasons for that, you know, those trying to run that were significantly limited on their ability and their staffing to be able to, to coordinate that effort. There was, there were no rules. Rules and regulations were an afterthought. There was really no, there was no mission. There was no defined outcome of it. It was just simply allow people somewhere to try to stay warm through the winter during COVID. However, we did learn, we did find some successes in that and some things that worked extremely well. And it would be remiss if we don't talk about those. We found and all the, the service agencies found that having everyone in a central location really benefited the outreach aspect of it. All of the, those agencies involved in that outreach and that engagement were really able to connect, break down some of the barriers with, with individuals and really start moving them on a path of improvement. Not all, let's be honest, not all, and we, we won't help all, but there were a number. You heard from them, at least one from the last meeting, really started moving down a, a, a path of improvement. That's all you can say. So that was really the, the best thing that I viewed that came out of it. Is that we learned a lesson that I think we can carry forward and we should be looking at carrying forward to really, you know, the other week, they talked about teach, you know, teach them how to fish and they'll be fine. That's great. But, but fishing is different for each one of the individuals that, that we're dealing with, you know. Fishing for some is to be able to make a phone call themselves. And this is just the reality that we're dealing with. So some of the individuals that we're familiar with, the, the odds of them getting a, you know, a stable employment and working themselves out without some significant assistance is, is not realistic. And so we did learn some valuable lessons on that, things not to do and things that really worked well. And, and since that's gone away, I think most of the service agencies will indicate that they've seen a decline in follow through and in connection with the individuals. And so, so we're looking at how can we help, how can we mitigate all of this? Because, and let's be honest, we're not going to appease everybody as we start looking through this. That really led us to the idea of the Walla Walla Center. I haven't seen anything better than Walla Walla. I'm not saying it's not out there. I'm not going to tell you it's a ideal location or an ideal situation. I'm not going to tell you it's going to be a complete success. But what I can say is that we have to do something with the Grants Pass, Boise, House Bill three one one five, we have to do something to protect our public spaces, to protect our Downcount Core and, and honestly, to protect some of the, the property rights of those who own properties here, here in, in the area. And whether you want. And whether you want to, we want to say it PC or not, nuisance nuisance complaints, livability concerns follow the homeless around, and they're legitimate concerns. We can see some of the photos up there. Completely unacceptable. And if we can come up with a solution where there is rule driven and and those rules are enforced, and there's consequences for those rules, I think it has a chance to have some success. I think that's where Walla Walla has succeeded at is because it is, there are rules. And now we go back to, not everyone will follow those rules. Not everyone will be allowed to stay in there. And so those individuals will be asked to leave, removed from the property such as that. But that doesn't give them a right at that point in time to just go free for all, sleep wherever they want. I think that's the biggest thing that I would take out of this is that it it allows, I'll say, the police to police again, to prevent a free for all from I want to sleep or wherever I want, and I want to protect myself from the elements. I think that once a situation like Walla Walla, if it ever comes to fruition, that gives us the ability to say, you had an opportunity over here, and just because you couldn't follow the rules, doesn't mean you get to do whatever you want now. And I think that's huge, and that's what we do not have right now. And again, not everyone will agree with it, but it was a significant change in the landscape when Boise came out, followed by Grants Pass. And every community is dealing with it on a certain level. Before COVID, I was involved in a a committee through the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police on dealing with how how are we going to respond as policing, how is policing going to respond to homelessness in the light of all of these? And it's kind of, you know, COVID paused everything, but it's not just a sweet home, it's everywhere. And, you know, there's always the adage of the concern, my biggest concern as we started down this this path was, if you build it, they will come. There's differing viewpoints on that. We saw some of that when the Nazarene Church was, you know, and we did see some of that. Are we going to see some of that? More possibly, you know, we do have certain things in in place that could be put in place with a sleep center that's been proposed that would protect from some of that for a period of time. But that can't happen. But I don't think it's as prevalent as we as many are concerned, because if that were true, then we wouldn't have homeless in our community. They would have gone somewhere else that has already built something. And the ones that we predominantly have here are homegrown. They're our own, they're our own community members that have been here as long as many of us have. And so at some point, we have to look at how could we how could we offer them the assistance that they need to help themselves out? And one thing I want to mention that, as we talk about this proposed sleep center, is that we didn't talk about it in the last meeting when Brock and Shirley with the FAC were here. But one of the that I was encouraged about is that the it's proposed to have a seven member board to oversee the 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 running, the operations and the direction of any of the proposed sleep center that that they'd like to see come in. And that seven member board is a a board of community members out of Sweet Home. Sweet Home and the immediate surrounding areas. It's not individuals coming in from Albany. It's it's a board that would be comprised of our local citizens that can have a say in in the direction of any type of sleep center. Because quite honestly, with Senate Bill two zero zero five, six, six, we can easily lose that if an organization wants to come in, acquire property, and we could easily lose the input that we have. And and I was extremely encouraged by the FAC wanting to really keep the the governance, the ownership of any type of sleep center within the community. And I've been rambling quite a bit, so I'm more than willing to answer any questions that you have. And if I can't, maybe Sean can, or maybe Dr. Horton who's in the audience, or maybe Counselor Gorley. It's been a long process, and it's a, like I said, put it right up there with masks and vaccines on the divisiveness.
Any questions to the police chief?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead, Counselor Sanchez.
Is there already ordinances on the books that would protect the townsmen and the business owners when these nuisances occur? If we get the sleep shelter, or is that something that we would need to do additionally?
I'm I'm not quite sure I understand the the question, Counselor Sanchez. There we do have some existing ordinance in place that should deal with livability, things like that, such as the offensive littering. Those are already in place. Is that was that someone your question?
And that that is maybe such as panhandling near ATMs or being out in public spaces or private spaces now that we have this sleep center. If we go forward with this, would we have to add additional things to the books to help?
Well, I think, and I, somebody else may be able to speak more clearly on what, and we'll go back to Walla Walla, because that's what we we've premised a lot of things on. But there are certain things that that we can't control or prohibit, and one is panhandling. That's been for quite some time. It's been considered, and the city attorney can can shed some light on this, but really a form of free speech. And so some of those things, we have limited ability to control. But there's also, you know, placing offensive substances on the ground, you know, urinating, defecating, those things are already on the books. But there may be others that I'm not thinking of right now.
Isn't also from a business standpoint, trespassing?
Absolutely. What we're talking about with Boise and Grants Pass is really public property. It has nothing to do with private property, such as business owners, private residences. They still, they always have the right to dictate who who gets to be on their property at any specific time.
So I guess that it would be the camping one that we were talking about that we would need to add if we were to move forward in the public space?
Honestly, I haven't really thought of that aspect. So, you know, that's something we we may have to look at. I'm not sure. I'm looking over at the city manager and the city attorney for input on that. I'm I'm not sure I have talked on that topic.
I was just saying.
Ironically, Counselor, we were having that discussion of tightening up those types of ordinances when Martin v. Boise came down. And then after Martin v. Boise, we we've kind of just been spinning, trying to figure out how that plays out and what that really looks like and and quite honestly, not wanting to be the poster child at the Court of Appeals and incur those those legal expenses.
I know I brought that question up here a while back regarding tents and camping on private property, just nonchalantly.
Thank you.
You mentioned private entities kind of thing rather than I need to take this off.
So you So you mentioned private entities doing this rather than a nonprofit? Is that right? There are, you said that, that they could come in without without the board and
Yes, I believe that anything that would come in would probably be a some form of a nonprofit. I don't think private entities would necessarily fit under the guidelines established under two thousand and six. Thank you. So I think it would have to be some form of organization, not necessarily a private firm.
Okay, but the organization we're thinking about working with
Yes.
is the one that institutes the seven member board, is that?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Problem. Thank you. But I didn't see anywhere even a straw wrapper. I didn't see a bottle cap. I didn't see anything. It was clean. And there's a fence around this perimeter that people check into. You can't just have people from outside in there, so there's no people. If the people have drugs, they brought it in themselves. They don't have deals coming in and out. The doors, the gate is locked at night. You can go out, but you cannot come back in. Once you leave, you've left until the next morning when they're opened up again. The facility is clean. It is safe. There are large trash bins with locks on them, so all of the supplies, you can see it on the porch, that people have go into them, and it's kept safe. So right now, when we have our warming shelters, people will travel through town. They used to do it up to the Lutheran Church. They can't take in their dog. They can't take in their private belongings, and they have to be out there in the morning. So all of their stuff have been left all over wherever they come from. With this, they have a hut. They have a trash receptacle, and stuff is not all over the place. They have the ability to take a shower so they can go to their job. They have the ability to use a toilet, so nobody has to clean up feces. And then the hammer is, if they can't behave, we don't have to let them sleep in the ride away in town. So we actually have more control. We actually have more say in our city. Right now, because of these rulings, because of what's going on, we don't have that say. And these people are a good partner. That seven member board are our community members. And I I think this is as good as it gets, especially if our real goal is to get people off the street and back in to housing, back into a situation. Because these doors, there's doors, there's a window, we're not providing heat. We're not providing all kinds of other things. We're just giving them a place to rest their head safely at night, but we're controlling that dialogue. I don't know that we can do anything better. We certainly can't do what large cities are doing, but I do think this is better than what Salem's doing. This is what's better than what a lot of people are doing, and it's within our means. But we have an entity that's wanting to get the grants and make that happen for us. Is it going to be completely free for us? We're going to keep things down as much as we can, but we have people already volunteering within our community, within the churches, bringing in food within the churches. We we just have a centralized place to do this. And it's been proven in Walla Walla that the crime rates go down. And it's not really what we want, because I've been looking at this for a long time. We've had people coming to us on the Health Committee because we needed something. I've been here five years now, and this has been going on, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. And we need to do something. This has been a huge topic for cleaning up our community. I was down a street the other day, and the whole into the streets blocked off, and it's just nasty. And we don't have to allow that if we can set up a facility like this and let FAC do it. Let them do what they need to do. So I'm sorry, I probably talked too long as well.
No, I I agree with you, Counselor Gorley, too, you know, but the thing is, I've had a conversation with Mr. Horton regarding this matter for a while now, and it's been a source of frustration, and I know we have to find a solution to the problem. I know that I've been here for a lot of years, and the homeless situation has gotten worse with and I'm not begrudging the churches, don't take this the wrong way, but when the churches are given breakfast, lunch, and dinner and free clothing, and that has increased with a lot of churches, I've noticed the homeless is more and more is coming. Not begrudging the church, okay? They are trying to do what they can to provide for these people. I can respect that. The other thing is, we overlook some of the simplest things, just like I brought this up to the city manager, grocery carts. Can you know, everywhere you look is a grocery cart, okay? I can tell you from being a business, those grocery carts start out all three and that. Every time I turn, I see a grocery cart. That's their source of mobile moving of their supplies. So I don't know if solution would be again with the grocery stores and say, hey, time to say enough's enough, and, you know, put your foot down on these grocery carts and say, we will take action when you leave my store with a grocery cart. If an officer sees a grocery cart, that's stolen property. I'm sorry, but it is flat out stolen property. And his grocery carts are getting more and more and more expensive. Just a thought, okay? But one conversation I had with Horton is, I know we're just the council that see we're going to give the support at this level, it's going to move it on to the county commissioners. I've had a meeting with the county commissioner, Ray and I did, and you're going to have a challenge. And heads up on that one, because there's a lot of questions that I know we're going to be asking tonight, and he's going to ask the same questions. But if these shelters don't come into play, and I've brought this up many times, a structured program is a solution. And I say that many times. When I with my church outreach program that I'm involved with, I'm involved with sixteen different churches in the valley. And I have a program that I go through the entire state of Oregon, and we take care of not only churches, but we also service missions, prisons, and so forth. And each year until the COVID that came about, we were going down to Eugene Men's and Women's Mission. Now, just just like this is such a clean structured program, I've never once went down to Eugene Women's and Men's Mission, and it's a homeless shelter. I'm sorry, I don't know how you want to call it any different. But when you're outside there, it is clean. There's nobody lingering outside. There's no trash on the ground. You'd have no clue that there's homeless in them buildings. That homeless, that mission there is the cleanest I've ever seen. And I can't stress enough, and it's right down in the middle of the business district. There's no problems. The crime rate, crime rate there is low. There's not, I mean, I've went around and asked businesses, there's no problems. There's no issues with the residents there. I've asked, I was curious. I was blown away with these missions for the last two, three years. And they're separated, and that's another question I'm going to have with shelters. They're separated from Women's Mission, Men's Mission, okay? So when you go into this mission, you have a recreation area, you have a kitchen, you have a church, you have a place where they sit down, dine, and eat, but they have bunks. They have a place to stay for the night, but in that building is strictly a men's mission or a women's mission. Because one question I'm going to have is going to be, okay, you're bringing the homeless into these shelters. How are you going to segregate the men from the women? And that issue is going to come about. So, you know, and we have to find a solution. There's no problem to this to this problem. But structured program, in my opinion, does work if you've got a strong management core working it. If you don't have a strong management core working it, you could talk all day long about success. Well, I I believe we do have a strong core that's willing to step up and work this and take control of this. But there's some things we we better take a look at before we move forward down this road shelters. And I know there's questions regarding that tonight.
So when we looked at this, and all of these huts were full, I think there was a couple of them that were in transition. There wasn't a single grocery cart. It was, everything was above board.
There wasn't a single grocery cart. It was, everything was above board. The other thing is with the homeless. I know that there are people who because of mental challenges or physical challenges or whatever's going on with them. But we have to remember that Oregon has been number one for people to move to. So our rent and our home prices have skyrocketed. And so many people having worked within the school system and with teenagers, I know that there, we have people in this town that have had their rent upped. And so the landlord could do that. They've kicked people out onto the street and they don't have first class or anything to be able to get into the next house. So we have people on the street who aren't long timers. We have people on the street who have had a bad relationship or something else. And so this is going to help them facilitate back off the street. These aren't career homeless people. We will always have people like that. But I do believe there is a structure here with this scenario. There's a door on there. It locks for safety so that people, and this is not for families. This is just for individuals. And I don't know, Dave, if you want to say anything about that too. I did see, we did identify some things we would like to do. Maybe if we have these sets, they would have to be lowered so nothing can get underneath of them. They had a pop-up with a heater so that in the winter time, when it's so cold that they need to get warm. Well, I'm sorry, I think one of those little sheds with a roof on it with no sides is better with that because it's more stable. There were some things we could do. They were passing around a hand crank washing machine so that people could go ahead and wash their own laundry. But they were providing bedding that was being laundered for them because that has to be done to some degree. It was very well organized. And it doesn't have to be super big, doesn't have to be strewn out across town. It can be in a smaller location. I honestly think that it, it's doable. It's absolutely doable and we would be a little higher than where we've been with people having to live in their cars on the street and having to live on the street because they don't have resources right now. And that's what we're trying to do is, is create some resources, not a golden carrot, but some resources to help people get off the street. Trash facility, bathroom facility, that kind of thing, just the basics, very, very, very basics.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Jeff, I was, or councillor, or not councillor, sorry, Chief Lynn, there we go. What her, or do you know like what, how much the crime rate will go down? Cause I know I like read the stats of what it's taking now, but do you know how much it will go down or how much it has gone down in other cities?
Yeah, I really don't. Those are as difficult to come by because really we don't necessarily, you'll see the stats we have here and I can provide them over the last five years. We don't necessarily delineate a call associated with a homeless person. And so we've had to go back and, and really do a lot of hand searching to, to try to determine the levels of calls that we have had. And so I, I'm not aware of any significant data that would indicate any type of reduction. I will say, well, and somebody, but you can see some Walla Walla's emergency department use. I can't read the bottom one. Is that just the ERs?
Yeah, that's the hospital.
Is that the hospitalizations? And with some of the services that could be provided, I could see a definite decline in some of those. But I'll tell you, I don't believe that our call load will drop to nothing associated with homelessness because there's going to be a, a percentage of those individuals that aren't going to fit into the rules, especially the, the structured type of program that the mayor is talking about that I, I think the FAC does want to run. They won't fit into that at least initially. And so I foresee our department still dealing with some of these issues, some of these nuisance issues on a, a regular basis. So I'm not going to sit and say that I think there'll be a significant drop in our call load because I'd have to see it before I believe it because there will be some that won't fit into this program.
And then the other question I have is, so like when someone breaks the rules and they get kicked out, do they just get kicked out of the facility or all? Like where, I mean, are they just going to go down to Safeway and stand there or?
Well, then that's, they would be removed from the facility itself. So they couldn't go back into that facility for whatever period of time that is.
Okay, so just the facility?
Just the facility. So yes, they're going to go somewhere. But they just can't, with this facility and based on Boise and Grants Pass, they just can't go sleep anywhere. We can have a significant say on what's allowed and what's not. Honestly, it kind of goes back to what we, how we operated three to five years ago. You know, individuals were at places that they weren't allowed, whether it's parks at night. And they were told they would just have to, you have to pack up and you have to leave. And frequently they would ask, well, where, where can I go? And the response was, I don't know. But you, you can't be here. And that's really what it would go back to for those individuals who, who choose not to participate in, in the structured program.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. When we went to this facility to tour in Walla Walla, as we pulled up outside of the fence, there was a person sleeping outside of the fence and they had been removed from the facility. I think the big key related to, to your question is once we have this facility, the police department now has the ability to dictate what goes on after that. Currently, right now, we really don't. And I, I think that's the key. So we can devise another location, which might just be right outside the fence where they won't have any shelter, but they're not going to be in a park. They're not going to be downtown. They're not going to be in the doorway of one of our downtown businesses trespassing somewhere. We would at least have the authority to dictate that moving forward. The other thing, if I could follow up, we put those numbers up. Walla Walla noticed a drastic decrease in in their services, emergency services, once they went to a 24 hour shelter. We have another one. Chief Behringer couldn't be here this evening, but he put together some numbers if we can get to that slide. In the past year, Sweet Home Fire and Ambulance District has spent approximately $79,000 on 44 transports. And that does not include mileage, the charge for mileage that we normally go with there. So between Sean's job is, has also increased his workload and initially when he was hired, it was a quarter of his time.
Maybe that was, I was over generous with that. We know he was going to be the, the homeless liaison that we're required to have. But we just didn't know the extent that it was going to, and thankfully he didn't either. And so.
So just between what Public Works is putting forth, between the time the fire department is putting forth and our police department, you know, we're, we're spending, I would bet it's 90, 80 to $90,000 a year on the homeless right now. Will that ever be zero? Absolutely not. No. But we might be able to trim it down to 20 or 30 if we can support some of these other things. That's our hope anyways.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Mayor. I would remind council that, of that sign up above that says culture, culture isn't what we encourage, but what we allow to happen. Is this a culture that we want to have in our community? I don't think so. I think we need to do something about this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to follow up on councillor Gorley's statement that I was actually pretty shocked. Because for me, could you put that back up again, that the, the actual place there for me? And so my question for anybody that has problems with this. I, I know this is an issue. It's, 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 it's a big issue, but I want you to go back to behind the old city hall for me, please, and, and show me a picture of that. And if you could. Okay, now my question is, would you rather have that or would you rather go to the other place and have that? And they're very strict there. If you get booted, it might be for two days. It might be permanent. And so you're absolutely right in everything you guys have said. We, we have to do something. Now, apparently legally, we have to. And I, I've got some concerns and it, and I understand the mayor and I've talked and we've talked about this and, and the people that are going to be coming from Albany or Lebanon or Brownsville, we don't know that that's going to happen. Can it? Absolutely. Absolutely. We could, we could get a surge of that. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know any data to that. I don't know. Is there, I don't know. I don't know. Walla Walla said they didn't have much, if, if any. You know, and, but my concerns, okay, and I have some. The cost. The cost and, and where are we going to get the money for our, for our part of it? That, that's, that's a concern for me. And then is the county and the state going to help us? I don't know. Probably not. Be my guess. I don't know. I, I don't know. And then if we, if we've come up with the money to help out with that situation, are we going to have to maintain, maintain that for the rest of our lives? I don't know that either. But I understand that Lebanon's building one. I understand that is true. And I found out today, which I think we talked about a while back, there's a gentleman in Albany who's building tiny homes. I didn't know that before, but I got some information about that gentleman who might want to help us out with that cost. I don't know. I've got the information and I'll get with the mayor and, and the city manager and we'll talk about that. But don't think that, that we're not concerned about this because we absolutely are. We've been, it's like councillor Gorley said, we've, and then the mayor, we've been talking about this for way back, way back. So for, for me, it's, they're, we can go about Walla Walla all we want, but they were very strict. They can't, they can't, I guess they can, if I, I could be mistaken. Can they not have a dog or a cat? They can't. They cannot have a whole family in there. All they can have a mom and children, which is pretty good, but they don't get to use the facilities there. If they want to clean their clothes, they have to clean it with that, like we, like we used to do when I was a kid. You know, the rocks. Anyway, I had a question. I wanted to follow up Ray with you about, and I forget what that was now, but I'll think about it tonight sometime and I'll call you.
I have some questions. I don't direct it to Mr. Horton. I go back to the segregation of men and women. That'd be one question. I know one question. High barrier versus low barrier facility. What are you going to do with families? And let's say you got 48 shelters and all 49, 51 and 52 showing up. What are we going to do? And then once they're here is I, I going to do as far as they could stay there permanently or is there to how long they could stay there? And then one question. Our city staff can answer this question is if this is not a successful program, can we scrap this at any time? In other words, if this goes south in our city, can we say, we're done, we're on, move on? Next, next solution, next problem. So I don't know any of those questions when they're tackled.
If I can, Mr. Mayor. We can answer a couple of those, I think, right now. Walla Walla did segregated men from women by where they were in, in the hut. So it was a women's hut or it was a men's hut? They, and we did ask that question while we were there and they hadn't had any issues. Correct? Not correct?
There were some couples.
Yeah.
Were, you know, either married or not married. You can't say if they were or were not, but they entered as couples. They weren't allowed to stay, you know.
So what, for those online, Dr. Horton said there were some couples that were allowed in the facility. Absolutely. This would be a low barrier facility. We can tell you that. Overflow. Excuse me. Again, if we you have to have the, a space for them. So if we have 48 and we get to 49, they can stay there, maybe, but maybe not in the facility. It might be to another location. How long can they stay? Walla Walla did not have a limit. You could stay there as long as you, as you needed. They had some people who had been there very long term. But they also had people who were there for very short periods of time who just needed a paycheck so they could go get permanent housing to, to get their, that apartment. Which again, all of those things, and I should mention as far as the question with families, there is another group in town working to essentially revitalize the Hope Center. So that is a possibility for families. And they're, they're moving forward and trying to, they're doing some work on that facility right now, I believe. Yeah. Can we scrap this? I believe the answer is yes. Again, you're, you would be a funder and certainly as the council, I mean, regardless of what staff or the community says, come budget time, if you zero that line out, it's, we're not contributing anymore. So I, I think it's safe to say that either party, FAC may decide they don't want to work with the city anymore. I think either party would be eligible to, to simply walk away. And I, I want to reiterate a point that Jeff made that I think is really important and, and that is the model that, that FAC is looking at. This facility would be run by seven community members and maybe there's a councillor that would be part of that, maybe not. Maybe Sean would be part of that, maybe not. Those are some details that still we haven't, that the group hasn't worked out yet. But they do have a draft document I can, that we can probably share here very soon. It includes some draft rules that, that we could all view and look at for the facility. So things are, are beginning to kind of come together to a point where with the work that, that the group is doing, we can get some more details and some more answers for a lot of these things. So. So that's how Walla Walla worked. Again, the seven member board could decide to do things a little bit differently. And I got to say, Walla Walla has been a tremendous help. They've answered, they've given, given us, all of us, three tours actually. They've answered phone calls. They've sent emails. Their assistant city manager spent half a day with us. She's shared the data that they have and the results and, and the processes and what they've learned. And actually one thing that was interesting is they really were walking the same path they walked. They had what they called Camp Chaos, where it was a tent facility similar to what we ran into last year. And they learned a lot of the same lessons that you heard the chief talk about as well. So. So I guess the answers to a lot of those questions is we can tell you what Walla Walla has done. And we can tell you that there will be a draft document that addresses all of those questions. But the way it's written is that seven member governing panel would, would really have the final say in it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just, my main question, I guess, is how much does this cost to build and then the long-term cost too? Sure, that goes to Dr. Horton or that one goes to.
Yeah, so there's a, a very rough budget that, that FAC actually sent me today. I have some questions on it that I'd like to, to work with Brock. He's actually done a pretty good job. He's kind of given a range of what certain, the breakdowns might be. But FAC has already received $150,000 grant to get it started. And talking with Brock today, looking at what other nonprofits are accomplishing. It's his feeling that once the facility or a facility is started, that then there's a lot more access to more grant money as well. So I don't have a solid answer for you, but we'll, we'll certainly take this and put it into a document for you. And, and again, it's going to be, there'll be, certainly be a margin of error.
Okay, it's just being the cost of taxpayers that I'm focused on, but.
Sure. No, absolutely. And what I would say is taxpayers are already putting out a significant amount of money. Yeah, in a reactive way versus a proactive way.
But thank you.
Well, a question for Mr. Horton. Is that facility that we looked at still in play? Okay.
For sale. For sale signs.
Yeah, I don't see a for sale sign on the building. But I know that the center itself, we are looking at having a center in within the facility. Walla Walla had one and it was used by all the different agencies that were providing services to the clients that live there. And it would be my hope that we could provide something similar to that. I know there's been discussion about possibly moving the portable building that belongs to the city, moving it over to that site. There are offices in in that facility. There are bathrooms in that facility. You already own it, so there wouldn't be much cost. It would just be the cost to move it over there, hook up electricity. But it would provide a facility for not only the clients that are there, but we would be bringing some of the health services, some of the mental services, some of the alcohol and drug services that we don't have access to right now in our community, not to the extent that we would like. If that was there, those agencies would have a spot where they could come. They could work with not only the clients, but they could work with other citizens within the community. So yes, there there are some possibilities that would strengthen the overall program.
Thank you. One second. Thanks, Larry. That was you actually asked me my next question because we talked about all the different services that facility could provide. And if we have at least another facility for those same services, that's a benefit. Yeah.
Thank you. LBCC is willing to come and send councillors to talk about how to fill out applications, how to do interviews, career searching, and they they're willing to come and help with that. So if we had a site, it would be a a step up, a hand up for these individuals.
Well, I know we have one to two doctors have said that they're going to step in and volunteer
Correct.
to help in this structured facility.
Exactly.
So that's a good thing, too. Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Mayor.
You know, Brock is on the line, I think, also, so.
And I could be mistaken because I might have been taking a nap then, but I thought you were going to come with some numbers today. Is that not true?
Brock actually gave the numbers to.
Okay, so that's the numbers you you guys were going to bring.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I can live with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm very interested in the draft document that we will be receiving too and how much it's going to cost the city citizens. But I'd also like to see in that document measurable goals. How do we know it's going to be success? What are the measurements that we're going to use to determine if it's a success besides cleaning up areas of our community? So, thank you.
We should be able to track the people who successfully get back into housing. We should be able to also track the weight of mental health calls that we're having. Because although we've been in a lot of stress, we should be able to track at least a rough estimate of what that difference is. So there should be easily trackable data on some of this.
In front of the fire, we should be able to have a medical check tracking, especially with going to be on site to help cut down some of those calls.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, does anyone know what percentage of the homeless that are homeless get back into the for this staff?
Mr. I think I think in Walla Walla, I Walla Walla, I think they had a pretty successful, and I'm not talking about ten or something, but I I think their their turnover was very good compared to what I thought it would be. I'm going to give you a number because I don't remember, but we can get those numbers because that fellow that we talked assistant city manager. We sat there for a long time and they were they were helpful. The guy that we talked to in the facility, he kind of went on and on and on and on, but he answered the questions that I wanted to know and I think all that we wanted to know. We're not Walla Walla. Okay, we can say that for sure. We're not Walla Walla and it's not going to be the same for everything for us that it was for them because it just won't be and I'm just, you know, they're fifty thousand there, fifty thousand, we're ninety eight hundred. And so that's a big deal. They had fifty, I want to say fifty two huts. You know, and they not, they were very seldom full. So anyway, and and the the things that they, if you did something goofy, you can't have a knife in there. You can't, you're not supposed to smoke in there. You're not, you can't have any of that stuff, no alcohol, any of that stuff, and they're very strict. According to what he told us, they're very strict. So and the police were really happy about that because their 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 calls went way down. That's a big deal because it does save us money. So anyway.
There was even a camera in the middle of it that they weren't using, the police were using. But if I remember my numbers right, they said they estimated a hundred and eighty two homeless within their community and that they're serving roughly fifty and last year they were able to get, I believe, forty five back into housing and jobs. Jobs and housing kind of go hand in hand. And so I believe those were the numbers and so that is pretty successful.
Thank you both.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, councillor Sanchez, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I just have a question or two. I hear a lot of people saying there's a lot of grant funding opportunities as well as a lot of volunteer capabilities. So I'm curious what the city's involvement needs to be and where the additional grant fundings are going to go to if there is a slew of volunteers. And secondly, if the city is involved, who is liable worst case scenario if some sort of rape or murder or stabbing happens on on the property?
So staff did have a meeting with CIS, our insurance carrier. There would be five thousand, I think it was.
I think it was. It depends on who's carrying what insurance. So initially, it's ten thousand dollars if we are the the liable party, but if we sign, if there's an agreement in which we're hold, we're held harmless and the liability is not on the city, then at that point, we're just insuring the property and and that and the stuff on it, which then would cut the price in half, yes.
Right, councillor Gerson.
Mr. Mayor. I we have heard from taxpayers who say they don't want their tax money to be used for this. And I I can understand that to a point, but I believe we should use our marijuana money. I mean, unless you're a user, that's not your tax money. And I think that this is, we have designated it for police projects and this seems to me like a good place to put it.
Well, this is definitely a police project. In a lot of ways.
Gee, thanks.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I apologize. That that goes back to the question of if there's grant funding available and a slew of volunteers. What does the city need to pay out of pocket for and where would the additional money be being spent on? I didn't get an answer to that from anybody.
Well, the one proposal just came up out was marijuana money, but that's a discussion for the council.
I guess what I'm saying is I don't understand why the city has to pay a dime if there is grant funding available and volunteers available and there's laws on the books that say that anybody could come into town and make this happen on their own. It would reduce any sort of liability that we would have totally. And then we would not be using taxpayers' money.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead.
So at least as far as as grants and such, yes, it would depend on where those grants are coming from, who's managing those grants. So if if the city is not the one receiving the grant, then, you know, that would there would, I think, plan, the the development of the plan and and who's responsible for what would kind of outline where those grant funds would go. It is possible that those grant funds would then be able to be used towards the payment of the city's insurance, but regardless of grant funding or who's really managing the site, at least what I've known now, and and the city manager can correct me, this site would be city property. Or at least we would be the least, the 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 group responsible or the lease holders from the county, if that's how this were to go. And so we are legally responsible for the property itself and and stuff that happens on that property that we can't get out of the insurance. Unless we want to open ourselves up to potential risk from lawsuit or anything else. So at the at a very minimum, regardless, we are responsible for the insurance.
And and then one last question, is the city of Walla Walla the ones that are liable and responsible for their safe sleeping shelter? Or is it just on the nonprofit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor, so they have a very similar arrangement as to to what we've been discussing. They have a group, a coalition nonprofit. I can't, the name of it's escaping me. But but they have a nonprofit who operates and runs the day to day of it. The city holds the the lease or the ownership of the property that it's on. Walla Walla is also home to the state penitentiary and it sits right outside and across the railroad tracks from the state penitentiary in an industrial area. But it would be a very similar setup, we think, for for this. And that the city would be the leaseholder and and then whenever you file a lawsuit, you name everybody. If I'm, if, you know, if I trip and fall on the sidewalk, you know, I'm going to name the city, I'm going to name if it's on the highway twenty, I'm going to name the state. If if my shoelace wouldn't stay untied, I might try to name Nike and and then try to make the judge figure out who's who's liable for what. So I I would venture to guess, quite honestly, that no matter how little we are or even are not involved at all, someone would attempt to name us because we have an insurance policy.
Maybe to help out, this facility is run with partnerships. And the more partnerships we have, the better the facility will be successfully. But if we step away even from ownership of the land, then we also step away from that ability to say, oh, this isn't working for us. There's too much liability with this and we lose that ability to shut it down. And we want to be able to retain that much of the ownership to be able to do that in a in a bad scenario. And I that's part of the price of being able to keep those strings.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, too, I I could be wrong. Great, I think, I think that they went him out of their way to get, they had property, but it was close to a school and a residential place. So they decided they they didn't want to do that because people said, no, we're not doing that. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, they either bought the property that they got or they traded somehow. Yeah, and so it wasn't property that was theirs. They traded with somebody that wanted property somewhere else, a private person. And that's how they got that property and it is away from, it's by the public works down there and there's another commercial place there really close to there. So there's no, there's no place, there's no residential places or houses very close. Now, they're there because they got to be, but and they they have buses to take them to places. There's a, there's a store close within walking distance. Anyway, so that was just another thing I would have throw in there because it's, you know, and this is, this is county property we're going to have here. So there'll be something possibly that they're going to hold us to or.
Well, I think the couple of things the county is going to, I think the lease is like a dollar a year, so we're not looking like a ton of money. But I think the one of the things talking with the county commissioner is, correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, was the high barrier versus low barrier and that's going to be source of topic in your meeting. So heads up on that, but.
So for safety, the fence was very effective and there was Constantino wire across it, so nobody can just hop out and come back in. I mean, it was secure. And so you can leave, but you can't get back in. And the community is, I I think it was much more secure than what people realize. And yet people wanted to live there because of that. They wanted their stuff safe. They wanted to be dry. They wanted to have access to those things. So they don't want to be naughty. And we always know there's people who can't control themselves and they're going to get naughty, but they get booted out. And so as far as a secure location, I they're an exact, a good example.
Any other questions, councillors?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm I'm just still having a little bit of heartburn with the legislation that just passed stating that we could have anybody come in and set up anything that they want without the city's involvement. And so if we want to pull back the purse strings or whatever, we're saying that's really irrelevant because if we choose to do that, the existing shelter could potentially still stay there and do what they would like to do without our help. And then I don't know if Walla Walla has the same legislation, so it's kind of like not really comparing apples to apples. So even if we want to be involved in it, that doesn't necessarily mean we can shut it down once it comes to fruition if we wanted to because of that new legislation, if I'm understanding it correctly from what I've heard tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to to address that, House Bill two thousand and six, you are correct. It does, it it, we we do have to approve something coming in from a qualified organization. That's basically a religious organization or a nonprofit or a city, which would be us. That being said, in this particular situation, a- and and regarding Washington, to my knowledge, they don't have a similar law. And so, true, that's different. In this particular situation, though, there's, there's, the way I see it, there with the law, there's two situations. One, you have a an organization come in and the city is not involved and the organization qualifies under House Bill two thousand and six. And they find land on their own and they acquire grants on their own and get it operating on their own. The only control we have over that situation, the only reason we could deny them the ability to run that facility is if it was a, is if it posed a risk to public health and safety. That essentially is the extent of our ability to shut them down. If, however, an organization comes in and partners with the city and the city is involved and the city is the leaseholder of the property and there is a a local board that the city has representation on, then that gives the city significantly more control over the situation and the city can govern, can influence the operation of that facility and the rules that are in place for that facility. And depending on how you structured the board, the city could dissolve that organize that facility. So that frankly, it gives, it would give the city a ton of power in that situation to to dictate terms and to resolve problems and then and frankly, to shut the whole thing down if they wish. Because this 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 House Bill two thousand and six doesn't say that you have to provide property. It just says if somebody applies for it, you have to approve it.
Okay, thank you. That makes more sense. I appreciate that.
Legia, could we see what's going on at the old city hall again with the homeless? I I think Dave made a really good point when he did that. I know, I know. It it fell out of my mouth and it shouldn't have. This is what we're talking about. This is what we have. And it's going to get worse. And so this is why we're having this conversation. We have to remember that.
Any other questions, the councillors? Okay, at this time, I will open it up for the public to ask any questions they may have. Any public would like to come forth and ask questions? Good evening, and the name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, Nancy White, nine eleven Sixth Avenue. And
And from what I've heard this evening, this Walla Walla facility sounds like a utopia. But one thing I haven't heard is, I'm a taxpayer, I pay a lot of property tax. I live on social security, I know this sounds like a sob story. How much is this gonna cost me?
Again, that's an unknown.
Y- your taxes wouldn't go up because of this, if that's what you're asking?
I'm, I'm asking where the money would come from.
Again, the goal would be to get as much grant funding as possible and-
I, I understand that.
As possible.
I understand that, but you can't guarantee grants.
Correct.
So, you have to have a backup.
Correct.
And my other question is, if we have this facility, it isn't a perfect solution, we're still going to have homeless out on the street. We're still going to have the trash, we're still going to have the police calls. So, are we putting money into something that we're still going to have to support over here? What are we accomplishing?
Clarification, up to now, the police department's hands are tied, okay? So, in other words, the old city hall parking lot, the Nazren, well, the Nazren Church is more of a private property issue in itself. But our public park are behind the city, old city hall, I mean, going all day long. Once we provide, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, and correct me if I'm wrong, the chief, but once we have facility in place, that gives us the teeth now to tell these folks, take a hike. You can no longer stay in the parking lot, you no longer be behind the, you, you, you gotta move on.
And so, where are they going to go?
That's up to them, but after a while, and they keep being told, no, 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 they better figure it out, because that's their, their option.
And I, I read the article in the paper said that it would be a, they had to be residents of Sweet Home for 60 days? That's what it said in the paper?
Yeah.
How do you verify that? What, what do you, how do you say to someone who's homeless, you haven't been here but 40 days? I mean, how, how do you deal with that?
That's a, that's a tough question to answer, really. Fortunately, you know, with the police department, we are familiar with the vast majority of individuals that are, are on our streets and are homeless. And so, that, that would play into our input, would be weighted. And I know FAC has discussed this at length, on what is an appropriate time, what's not an appropriate time. You know, quite honestly, we come at it from different angles. You know, the FAC is a, an outreach group, that's what their whole intent is, you know? But they knew right off the bat that one of the sticking points was gonna be some type of residency requirement. And I think they've, they've, they've tried to work to find something that's, that could potentially be acceptable to everyone. Or, or at least some, I know Dr. Horton's raising his hand, he may have some other input on it. But you bring up some, some valid points and I'm not gonna dispel any of them.
Visions of a, a waiting list with these type of camps building while they're waiting to get into the facility.
I will say that the, the location behind the old city hall, Sean and I have dealt with yesterday, and we will be back there tomorrow morning to, to, to fix some of the lapses that we found. Because quite honestly, we, we were shocked at where's all this stuff coming from? Where's this coming from? I have no idea where this stuff's coming from. And we found the source of that. And Sean was able to reach out to them and they're working on, have worked on potentially a solution to eliminate a lot of those items coming in that quickly. And so, right now, I'll be honest, we're in a reactive stage, we're reacting to everything. And it would, my hope is that we can get to something that's proactive.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that covers my questions, you've covered most of my questions in your discussions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Larry, you wanted to fill in a little bit on some of it.
I was just gonna add that FAC is an outreach program that's been working in our community for years. They know every homeless person in our community. So, as soon as new comes in, they know who they, and they would not be allowed to go into this. They would have 60 days that they would have. We hope not, we hope they would go back to where they came from.
If I can add, Mr. Mayor, if I might have just a second? We're all really concerned about the, if you build it, they will come, question. I, I, I think the thing that has changed a bit on that round or in that space now is with what's going on legislatively, every community is now doing something. Historically, what we kinda saw, and pardon me if I'm wrong, but we had some people from Lebanon show up in, at the church during, during the tent ordeal. Because Lebanon didn't have any kind of a facility. I, I know in talking with Lebanon, that they are working on developing a facility as well. So, there won't really be a reason for people to be coming. And certainly, again, if, if you're looking to get services, I don't wanna say we're the bottom of the barrel, as far as your opportunities to get services, but we probably offer a lot less services for, for people in need than, than all of our neighboring communities. So, will there be some? Absolutely. Are there now? Absolutely, you get a, a person every now and then who comes in and is drifting through. Would I foresee a, a, you know, a lineup of people? I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that by any means.
I'm glad you brought that up, Ray, because I know that Salem's is adding small shelters. You've got Florence, you got Lebanon, you got Albany, you've got, or Eugene's doing them. Carvallos is doing it. All these communities are doing the same thing we're talking about, so that we're just not the inventor of this solution here.
A- a- and, and we've tried to be very honest. This is not a hu- there is no true 100% solution to these issues. It's just homelessness is, is such a wicked, wicked problem in so many different ways that, again, we're, we're trying to find a way to mitigate the impact of homelessness, both for the unhoused, but also for the community and find that kind of sweet spot in the middle. Ideally, we'll be able to get to a point where we don't have homeless people living like the picture you've seen. We, we've added a, a, a portable restroom over by the fire department to try and help alleviate some of the issues that we're having to deal with. Nobody has a solution, I mean, is, is the reality. And so, what can we do to mitigate the impacts on the community and on the unhoused in a humane and legal manner? And, and that's the fine area that we're trying to find with this. And I will add, if you go inside these, these huts, they're, they're, they're not something you wanna, that I would wanna stay in for any length of time. I mean, it's literally a wire cage with some plastic and a rubber sheet over the top. And there's, there's just not much to it. So, it, it, we're not gonna have all the answers, is, I guess is what we're getting at.
It's not possible.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, for me, it, it's the, it's the, it's the, it's this or that. And we, we don't have very many options. As far as the cost, it's gonna, there's gonna be a cost. I don't care what anybody says, you can be naive enough, naive enough not believe that there's gonna be some cost for the city. There's gonna be some cost. They gotta put water in, they gotta power down there, we gotta sewer in there. And, and the fortunate part for us is, is that that piece of property is blacktop. It's not, it's not gravel. And absolutely right, it, it had great big walk. So, we have to figure out, and it's not gonna be perfect. It's not gonna be easy. Disagree with us. We, we have to figure something out. If, if, I would like to have somebody tell me outside of the council here, what, what they would do to, to fix this so that it's not there. We have these options, we only have a couple. I don't know what the others would be.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add something? If, for those of you who are around, it was probably about 2013, you may remember, we had a couple individuals come forth before council and they wanted to, they wanted a place where they could sleep at night. They wanted basically to be able to, somewhere in the, the community designated for them because they were homeless. And at that point, I was, it was 2013, 2014, I was like, absolutely not. This is, it's a terrible idea, no way would I ever support something like that. And eight years later, the, quite honestly, the playing field has changed so much that I don't see another, another option to alleviate some of the nuisances. Because quite honestly, if, without something, I'm going to have to dedicate somebody almost on a daily basis, every morning, to go over and police cleanup between us, public works, and I only have one of Sean. And he's only supposed to be doing it a quarter of the time and that's gone to the wayside. But it's changed, it's a whole ballgame's changed. And, and that's what's, it's taken me a while to wrap my head around it, but in 2013, I was like, no way. And now, I'm, we gotta find it, we gotta find an option.
Well, again, the shel- the shelters are not an option, then I, I invite someone or challenge someone to go to Eugene, look those missions. Because I kid you not, it's exactly what you're just talking about, chief. And I, I, I'm not once went there and it's not professionally done and it's not clean. You would not know that there's homeless in them facilities on the outside looking in, so, it's food for thought. We, you know, I, I brought up a little quick, giving the freebies away and the shopping carts. And, and I've had to take action to, in where they can't sleep in front of the post office front door. And, and the Nazren got out of hand and Farmers Market, we had problems and I can go on all day. And it's getting tiring to constantly having to do, come, come up with a creative solution to get that problem resolved. And then, it's up over here, it's like wildfire, it's a nonstop. So, I agree, we've got to come up with a solution, it might not be the right solution, but we gotta do something, do nothing. So, if somebody else has a better solution, I'm all for it, but. Go ahead, Larry.
If I may, address what- If I may, address what you just said as far as having a mission. Where in our community do we have a facility that could house a mission, number one? Number two, would it be something that the city would buy? So, there would be a cost to buy it? And then, are you going to hire FAC to run it? I guess, would, those are the three questions I'd have regarding that. Some communities are actually buying motels, spending millions of dollars buying motels, using tax dollars, money, tax, people's tax dollars, pardon me, to buy these motels. They then go in and outfit them to make them livable. I, I think we have maybe 20 rooms in our hotels, may, I don't know, I'm just guessing. Well, I have two motels. So, and I don't think you wanna go buy a motel. And I know-
I bring the mission up because if, if the shelters fall through, because you're gonna have a challenge at the county level.
I would, I would love to see the facility that we could afford to do that in. Because I agree with the, the Hope Center is great for the families that, that are homeless. The mothers and the children that are not going to be housed in this facility we are talking about, they're going to be housed over in the Hope Center. So, that's a real positive for our community, we have a place where our families will be able to go. But we also have a, a need to house these people that are on the street. And I'm hoping that that's what all of you will be able to support eventually.
Well, I agree with you, Larry, no question about that. I just bring up the mission, you know, I, I've never had the opportunity to sit down with that organization and find out how they're funded. I don't even know how they're, how they're funded, so, it's just-
I like the idea.
Yeah, the idea was, is successful, but I don't know how it's funded.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make one clarification?
Yeah.
The, I, I know there are, much like there are likely grants out there that can help in this process, the state is providing grants for the purchase of, of motels for, for homeless populations. I don't know if it's, you know, dollar for dollar, if you're buying a motel for a million, or is the state gonna give you a million? I don't know that. But I know there is money at the state level associated with purchasing motels for the purpose of homeless.
I was just gonna chime in on, on Jeff, I'm glad.
Again, back to the public, anybody else would like to come forth with a question before we brought up? Good evening, name and address for the record, please.
Josh Thorstad, 1210 44th Avenue, I believe. So, I got a couple of things, one is, I interact with police 20 times a day. Salem Police, Kaiser Police, they're doing lots about the homeless situation there. A lot of the tent cities there are not city land, it's owned by ODOT, that's why they're under overpasses. Kate Brown has made it very clear that in order for there to be a trespass, there has to be a victim. And ODOT is not going to be the victim. So, therefore, you have all of this on their land. Same thing in Eugene, under the overpasses, the parks, all that stuff, ODOT, okay? So, to clarify some of that stuff. The next is, we keep bringing it up about if they don't follow the rules, they get kicked out, they're still gonna be on our streets. They're gonna be on our streets during the day, not on the park. I, I get kinda tired driving in and out of Sweet Home every single day and seeing people passed out, piss everywhere. I mean, I would like to see Sweet Home a destination location. We have a beautiful lake, we have lots of things to offer and people just coming in and out of here. So, that'd be a good thing to start with. Let's see.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. Why can't we invest money? Oh, I just said that, so, let's invest money in the Sweet Home, make, you know, better destination, bring jobs, bring tourism. Homeless doesn't help that. What's the cost to the taxpayers? We've been asked that multiple times, I thought that was the whole point of this meeting. There's no money, we don't know. I made a promise to you guys that I'm gonna be at every single meeting, I'm gonna live up to that. Let's see, towards Dave, you said you want somebody in the city to give you an answer for the trash and stuff like that. My question to you guys is, who's gonna be accountable for when things go bad? Who's gonna be accountable when this fails? Uh, let's see. I heard down the road, this is a question, from a while back, that the city has, I think, vacated property at some point that owners die and they have gave it to the city or like businesses that are downtown that are bake it. What are those buildings being used for? Is that true? That's one other question. And Lebanon, you guys keep talking about Lebanon putting in another homes camp. They do. I'm active at their meetings as well. I'm active in Lynn County a lot. They have big donors. I don't know if you guys know, but they just put in a 4,500 foot concrete walkway, that's 11 feet wide. One guy donated $650,000 for that walkway. Why? So, they got donors, we don't have any donors, now that I know it. So, those are my questions. And I know Lebanon has got a couple of grants and I'm all for it, but I don't wanna pay for it. I came to Sweet Home because I liked it, right? I don't want all this going on. And we keep hearing the doom and the gloom and all this other stuff. I get it that we have to do something, but.
So, what's your solution?
My solution is, I don't know, I need to keep coming up some ideas, I have some ideas. But I don't like throwing out just empty stuff, I like to have something to back that. And I'm working on that. But I am a business owner, a couple of them in Lynn County, I care about Lynn County and I have employees and- And, uh, I have employees and, uh, I would like to open a business in Sweet Home. So, uh, like I said, I, uh, I don't know. And you guys are the council, you know, I plan on maybe even running for council, um, so I can help input. Uh, but, uh, I, I understand. I don't want you guys to think I'm your enemy. Uh, I understand that you guys have a tough decision to make. But I don't want you to make a decision off of lack of knowledge and, and information. Like we, we gotta do something, but we can't just do something just to appease something. And so I'd rather get all your facts straight, get your information straight. And, uh, if somebody wants to come in here and manage it, I think that's better than the city trying to manage it.
That's what we're talking about. So the city's not managing this. And if we have our way, we're going to little to no money involved in this. That's our goal. But.
Then I'm, I'm for it. Uh, but I don't think the city, I think we have bigger fries in the oven.
I don't think anybody's gonna disagree with you. I think the point here is we don't have an actual dollar amount because we're still looking at our options. We don't have an answer for tonight on those, those dollars. One, one counselor brought up the marijuana money, which is significant amount of money.
Oh, I know it is.
Okay. So I don't know about any vacant buildings and, and that's been turned, turned over to us, maybe raked, lighting on some of those.
I don't know. It was just a rumor. Just I had to ask.
A lot of times rumors, there's no, nothing behind.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Okay. But I'm like the rest of these councils. I know, I'm not a big fan spending taxpayer's dollars on this. But on the same token, we are in a roundabout way paying taxpayer's dollars on the problem in other, in other areas. And that's what it, it's, it's a no win-win. It depends on how you look at it.
There's other cities in Oregon. Uh, I brought the statutes, uh, that I know that officers are in those cities. And there's things that cities are doing with ordinances. But if somebody passes a law that directly makes an expense, that has to be subsidized. So if there's a law that says that we have to accommodate this, we need to have the funding for it. Why should we have to pay for it when they made the law?
Again, like I say, we're not looking at how much money we have to put in. I mean, we're not, we're trying not to put as much money into.
I understand that.
Okay. Finding a facility that we're talking about, it's not a guaranteed win-win success. But like the chief's talked about and the, and the city manager's talked about and some of the testified. It gives us some teeth to stop a lot of crap that's going on around the town. And if we start taking some of our teeth and start biting harder, once we put a facility in place and not turn an eye, that will help at least start the process. If somebody's being told move, 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 they'll get tired and they will move. I mean, and that's.
Another location.
Well, it depends on, you know, if there, there's no other location in town.
Well, I mean, just like, you know, our wonderful president today made some awesome, uh, mandates, uh, executive orders. There's gonna be a lot of.
We're getting off topic.
No, 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 no. It's not. It's on topic because it's going to have repercussions on Sweet Home. You have central employees. You have a ranger station right down the street, right? My wife works there.
Yeah.
So you guys keep wanting to come up with money to provide for people that can't provide. But the people that are providing the people that can't provide are losing their jobs.
Yeah, we're getting into different topics, the mandates and everything else going on. So that's.
It's coming, it's in our, it's in our home. It's our backyard.
Well, I understand all that, but.
So.
Get back to the, let's get back to homeless.
I can't, uh, don't, don't go. Uh, I, I would, I would like to sit with you or have you sit with him or the mayor and tell him what you think we should do. What, what your, what your opinion is of how you can help us get to that, that goal that you want us to have. It's very simple. I'll sit with you anytime. I came over and saw you the other day. I, I don't have an issue with that. If you come up with a better plan, I don't think anybody on this board or this council is going to say no. But we haven't heard any of that. We, this is the, this is the options we have right now. And if you think you have a better plan, man, let's talk about it.
I just said I don't. I, I just said I don't. Uh, I have some ideas, but like I said, I'm not going to just throw ideas out there because uh, there's nothing to back it.
Well, it is to his statement. If you come up with a solution or a thing that comes to your mind and you think it'd be a win-win, please bring it to my attention. Give me a call.
I've actually emailed you multiple times in the last three years. I haven't got a, a single response. Same with the chief. I actually tried doing a fundraiser. Yeah, my wife, I can't emails you all the time about the speeders on my street. So. Yes. So that's a side note. Um, so anyways, we're off topic. So I'll just, whatever.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate your time.
Anybody else next would like to come forth? Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Edgar, and I live up on, uh, Ridgeway. Uh, I guess my question, it actually comes back to what you were talking about earlier. Um, the low and high barrier. I'd like to know like the major differences between those. Because I think the, the low barrier means like, that's what we're planning on doing, or that's what this plan is right now. It's low barrier. Is that correct? Okay. Low barrier means that they don't have a lot of goals. Is that correct? Like that's less goals for the people that are in them. Is that, no?
No, you go ahead.
What is it? What is it?
So a low barrier, a low barrier just means there are fewer, um, obstacles to get in and, and be, uh, in the facility. So a high barrier might, might charge some rent. A high barrier might, uh, require, um, participation in a rehab program. Um, there'd just be more steps. And, and so what you, the, the process that seems to work is you can get people into a low barrier. Get them some stability, uh, get them, um, matched up with some resources. And then they can move into a medium and a high barrier and then into some type of, of housing on their own. Uh, in larger cities that have more resources, it's kind of a step-by-step program, if that makes sense.
So in a nutshell, we would be starting something that we would have to add on to in order to actually get these people moving forward.
No, no, you can go from a low barrier into housing and, and the facility in Walla Walla did that. So they had 45 or 48 people in COVID that they were able to place into some type of permanent housing last year. It, it, there's just.
Permanent housing that they paid for or that?
Correct. Yeah, they got, so these people would come in. Some of these people actually had a job. But for whatever reason, they lost their housing, a rent increase they couldn't afford or whatever. Some of these people came in and they were, they lived in the facility for a few weeks or a month or two months enough to save. And then went right into just a different form of housing. So, um, no, it's, like I said, Walla Walla put 45 or 48 people from a low barrier facility into housing.
Okay, yeah. That was my main question.
Yeah. And, and another thing, a high barrier may not allow pets, for instance. And that's a big deal for a lot of homeless people is they're not willing to do anything, at least take that initial step if they can't bring a pet with them. So it could be something as simple as that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come forth, be heard?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, there are a couple of people who called into the meeting. Um, I, I don't know if they want, if they'd like a chance to speak, but I did unmute their microphones in case.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would like to.
Open them up for them.
Is there anybody on the phone who would like to, to speak to the council or ask questions?
Good evening. My name is Brock Byers. I'm from Family Assistance and Resource Center Group. Uh, 1420 City View Place, Albany, Oregon. And, um, I just had a couple of points. One, I've heard a little bit about budget. And none of us like to see any cost consequence, uh, with our taxes and such. Um, FAC has worked. Um, we have approximately $50,000 left over from this year. And we did receive a $150,000 grant on behalf of, uh, targeting for the Sweet Home Sleep Center. Uh, Dr. Horton and I, I believe we may be getting another 30,000 grand, um, to also assist. But unless we have a center, I can't ask for money against a center if there is no money. But I can tell you there is money out there. I talked with my cohort and, uh, Corvallis that just recently purchased the motel and they just recently got another $8 million for their motel. But we cannot, without a facility, without agreements, without the ability to move forward, to keep asking for money. If, you know, the city and, and, you know, the members of the community don't want this facility. So I know FAC is working hard to, you know, make it as cost-effective as possible. But I also want to acknowledge that nothing's free. You heard the city's put out porta potties at $150 a month. The city spends energy and time cleaning these, these various sites and that's definitely no fun. So there is a cost action to doing nothing as well. But just to let folks know that FAC is here to help the community and help this project move forward. And I don't believe doing nothing is, is a good solution for the business owners, for the community. And I heard the one gentleman saying he wants to make it a, you know, a destination for, uh, community. And I, I totally agree. It's a beautiful, beautiful community and we don't need, you know, this level of blight and, and, you know, issues on the streets. And we can, I think, do something about that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Brock. Anybody else?
And, you know, whether you guys, I think you guys understand this, Jeff and Sean have been doing this for, for quite some time. Public Works has been dealing with it intermittently. As of the last two and a half months, we're all in on a daily basis, Monday through Friday, whether we want to be or not. So know that, that we're in and it's only getting worse. So.
Anybody else online?
Uh, I have received no other requests for, for questions.
This time I'll ask for any else would like to bring some, something else up. One last point or question. Okay. Go ahead. Do you have one question?
No, I was just going to say that with what Greg just said about, uh, Public Works. When they're out cleaning up, they're not doing what they really want to do, which is prepare roads and clean up the parks and et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. Horton, you have anything else you want to add?
Oh, I think all of you have asked it very, very. Thank you.
I think all of you have asked the right questions. You've discussed it thoroughly. The options are limited. Uh, I don't know what else to say. I, there's really, I said it the last time. There's three options. Option one, leave it the way it is. Is everybody happy with that? No, nobody's happy with that. Option number two, go to what we had last November, December, January, February. Set up emergency shelters, the best we know how, and try and help people get through the winter. Or option three, construct something similar to what's at Walla Walla. Is it going to look exactly like that? Maybe, maybe not. But I know the rules, the regulations, those things, FAC has modeled the entire operation of the program after this program. And it works. We have seen it work. And all we're doing is asking the city to say, yeah, we can get behind that. It may not be the best option, but it's the only option at this time. And if we can improve it as time goes on, we'll improve it. If it doesn't work, we'll shut it down. But doing nothing, we've seen the pictures. We know what doing nothing is doing. And according to our own employees, it's getting worse. Not better. We have an option right now to make this better for Sweet Home. You need to think about that as counselors, because right now it's kind of on your backs if you want to make a difference in this community. And I guess the Health Committee appointed a small committee to look into this issue. We have spent seven months looking at this issue. We have explored every option, every location, everything that we could to try and find a place that would meet the needs of our city and the needs of the homeless. I think by building this, we can do both. It's a win-win situation. And if it isn't a win-win situation, close it down.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Ray, could we have the numbers that you have on, on our next time we have a meeting for this? So we can get some sort of an idea where we might be, uh, because we're going to have to figure out what, anyway, it's just the numbers that you got.
Yeah, well, um, I, I just want to have a conversation with Brock to make sure I understand them, probably format them a little differently into a format that you're more familiar with, um, as far as the budget goes. Which, so for follow-up, if I can, to clarify what council's looking for moving forward. A, a request of the, the sample guiding document that FAC is using as for their structure and their rules. Um, a sample of the facility rules of how it would, the facility itself would be governed. And a proposed budget, which we would include whatever we can as far as sources as well. Does that sound like the, the three things you would like to be moving forward?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
It's Counselor Sanchez or was someone else speaking? I thought I.
At the same time, but go ahead, Counselor Sanchez.
Um, the, if I believe his name is Brock, he said that his, um, colleague had applied for an $8 million grant. Um, I'm curious if that's a capability for our town. And then would we be using money that we received in grant funding for solving the homelessness crisis? Or, um, what would that, that funding be going to? Would we be able to build them houses? Or are we just looking for money to sustain, um, the Sleep Safe Center? I would like some, I would like some answers to those questions, um, in your three or four point budget analysis or whatever you're gonna resubmit next time.
So I'm looking at Ray. It's FAC that would be getting the grant and running the facility, not us. And so we wouldn't have anything to do with that grant money or that end of it. Does that help?
So that's kind of my point. It's homelessness.
Yeah, it's not us running it.
So I'm just curious if it's going to solve the homelessness issue or if it's just going to be profitable.
No, this isn't running for, it's a nonprofit. So this, the money that they get helps run it. And that's what it's for. And they're highly accountable with their books for that. But the more money they get and invest within, um, the community, the better. Go ahead, Brock.
There is no, no, no profit. This is a nonprofit. Um, our director, I think, makes something like $800 a month. I'm unpaid. Um, the, all the funds go to our homeless outreach and our homeless operations. We did apply specifically for the sleep center in Sweet Home to include a lot of funds for a lot of areas, not just the physical, um, huts, but also things like, um, uh, getting IDs, um, helping people, um, you know, transportation, alcohol and drug treatment, you know, all kinds of various actions and activities. So without an actual facility, there is a lot of funds regarding facilities and operations of facilities. And we, we don't have, um, the capability right now because we missed the deadlines for, say, buying a hotel, if we were going to do something like that. Of which, you know, it just depends if there's even someone in that community to sell it. But the idea is that we'll continue, um, seeking funds and funding, um, for this operation. So that it can be, you know, a net zero cost to the community. And, and, um, we have an ability to provide the functions and functionality that's needed by this community. And, and, you know, as I think was mentioned earlier, this board of seven is going to dictate how these funds, um, will be utilized and spent. So if it makes sense to quote, build a tiny home village, which is what Albany is doing, uh, high barrier, tiny home village, that, you know, could also be an option as well. But until we kind of put together a concerted effort, um, you kind of get what you get right now. Which is, it sounds like, you know, it's pretty much in your park and, and it's not, you know, coordinated. And without that coordination and stuff, it, it's really hard to get, um, that level of funding. and without that coordination and stuff, it, it's really hard to get, um, that level of funding.
Larry, go ahead.
I know you're gonna hand that to me anyway, thank you. Um, just to kind of delineate a little bit on the eight million dollars and how that's distributed and where it's coming from, and that type of, uh, question revolving around what, uh, Counselor Sanchez asked. The Oregon Community Foundation is the agency that has been distributing a lot of these federal and state dollars for these projects. I know Ashland got eight million dollars for a motel, Medford ended up with a bunch of money for a motel. It seems as though everything is revolving around, are there facilities that can be purchased that can help house the individual homeless people? We don't have anything like that here. I mean, even if we were to buy both motels, like I said earlier, we're probably only gonna have twenty, twenty-five rooms at the most. So Brock and I are actually meeting with, uh, representatives from the Oregon Community Foundation on the thirteenth to talk about, why aren't you giving money to smaller communities that don't have motels to buy? What do we have to do to get some of these big dollars that are being given out? We're not asking for eight million, man, if we ended up with five hundred thousand dollars, we would be elated. And so hopefully after the thirteenth, we'll maybe have a little bit more direction as to maybe they need to look at small communities as well. At our last meeting, your last meeting where you set up this meeting, we actually had the Oregon Community Foundation people that we're talking with set in on that meeting. And what they're looking for are communities that are working together to solve the issue, not communities that are fighting each other and trying to come up with divisive ways of resolving it, because it's not gonna get resolved that way. When they heard that we were talking with the county people in regards to the possibility of doing some land sharing, they became very interested very quickly as to how small communities might resolve their homeless issues. We have an opportunity to be, uh, trendsetters. A very good opportunity to do that, and I'm really hoping the thirteenth, I'll be able to come up with possibly some alternatives for more funding. That's what we have to do, we have to be creative at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, sorry. Anything else? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn this work session at eight forty.